Okay, good morning, everybody. January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Welcome to the very first meeting for the Planning Commission for the City of Dennison. Glad you're here with us this morning. We will, traditionally, we start our meetings with an invocation and a pledge of allegiance. If you'd like to join us, we'd ask if you would stand with us at this time. Father, we thank you again for another opportunity to come together to solve the business of our city, the city that you let us call home, and we are grateful for that. We ask that you would be with us, bless us. For those in California, Lord, we just pray that you would bless them, Father, and soothe their problems and comfort them in this time of loss. And we give you a thanks for all the blessings. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. May be seated. Before we get started, we'd like to welcome our newest member to the Planning Commission, Kurt Chikowski is joining us. Kurt, welcome.
Thank you.
And good to have you with us. And that being said, I guess I'm gonna turn this over to, well, no, let's see. We're gonna go ahead and go to the consent agenda. Any consent agenda we've got discussion of the meetings from our commission meeting held December the tenth of twenty-four? Any errors, omissions, changes? Okay, if there's nothing there, we entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion. Have a second. All in favor, aye. Opposed, okay. Let's move into item four A, our public hearings. And I'm assuming Ms. Tate you'll be handling this for us this morning?
I am. Ms. York is off today, so, you know, she always does such a good job, so bear with me this morning, okay? Our first, yep, public hearing will be for receiving a report, holding a discussion, and conducting a public hearing and making a recommendation on a request for approval of a conditional use permit for property located, for property legally described as being Block One, Lot Two of the Breezy Hill addition in addition to the City of Dennison, Grayson County, being commonly known as four thousand Texoma Parkway, G-CAD property number four-four-nine-eight-three-seven, located within the commercial district for the operation of an office warehouse, case number two thousand twenty-four dash one-two CUP. This is a request for a conditional use permit located off of Texoma Parkway. They are building a new structure at this location, and it is to operate as an office warehouse for online sales of racing simulation parts. There is a landscape plan that has been submitted, the property owners here as well as the business owner. The operations will consist of a storage racing simulation parts in addition to other gaming items for online sales, and there will be no production taking place on the site. The applicant is proposing the hours of nine AM to three PM, Monday through Friday, and will consist of two employees and no walk-in customer traffic. This is consistent with the future land use plan as well as the comprehensive plan, the areas to be developed in a mixed commercial manner. Prior to obtaining the certificate of occupancy, the site must receive all construction finals. They also will be required to install the landscape. However, Mr. Earnhardt did approach me prior to this meeting stating that due to the weather, there are some complications with getting the correct material as well as the installation, and that's something that I'm comfortable working through. We knew that was going to happen with some other cases in the past, that if the weather is causing issues, that we can push that out and work with the applicant to make sure that that happens. The property is adjacent to State Highway ninety-one, and so the parking lot there does provide adequate access and traffic flow to make sure that there are no adverse traffic effects to that area. With that, I am present for any questions. Staff does recommend approval of the CUP, and at this time, we can open the public hearing for comments.
Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. And we will, is the applicant here this morning?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to come forward?
Sure.
If you would, give us your name and address for the record, please.
The new address or our current operation?
Either one.
My name is David Bridgeforth with K Two Partners, and we're currently in two thousand twenty-two South Crockett Insurance. And we are also under contract to purchase the building at four thousand Texoma Parkway. We own and operate Sem Ray City, which is simulated racing, gaming, rigs, and parts.
Any questions of our speaker? All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak on behalf of this request, either for or against? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend the approval of the conditional use permit that allows for the use of an office warehouse for property located at four thousand.
Chair, sure, I believe that we have somebody that wants to speak.
On this, on this request?
No, I'm sorry, no, we can't relate, so I just want to know which one is this?
This is case number two-
This is the, sorry, go ahead.
Two oh-two-four dash thirteen CUP.
This is twelve.
Twelve, yeah, or twelve, I'm, well. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the letter, it's twelve, yes.
Can I, can I, can I speak now?
Sure, yeah. Let the record reflect that we're not, we didn't close the public hearing, please.
Okay, I'm here on behalf of BCGS Property. We listed this later from the city. Actually, no, we want to oppose for this.
Could you state your name and your address, please?
My name is Pasanta Panto, and the property holder is BCGS Property LLC. I'm the one of the owner of this LLC.
So you have property that abuts up to this property?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay, what is your, what's your reasoning for opposing the case?
Actually, we are planning to build a nice, you know, high-end, high-inход, presidential property there. So, I think, you know, they're, the J E K S Holdings, right? They're, so they're building the warehouse, something like that, you know, they are next to the property. So we just want to oppose these proposals.
Okay, now, you are aware of the fact there is a building-
Yes.
-already there. Are you, are you opposing the building itself, or are you opposing the use?
Not but the building itself, it's already there, right? So, building is there already, we know that, but, you know, whatever they are trying to do further, that's what, that's what they know.
Okay, so what is it about the use that you're, you're opposing?
Use means, you know, the J E K S-
The business. What is it about their business that, that you're opposing? What's it gonna do to detriment your property?
Now, I think, I think, you know, they're, they're gonna, I'm not sure, you know, I, 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 I'm a little, you know, we are a little late here, so I, I don't, this letter doesn't mention everything, the whole things.
May I see your letter?
Yeah.
And I can, let me see if I can help a little bit. Thank you. Okay. Right.
So if you still have the word, because why do you have to give me the word?
Okay, so, yes, that is what I just spoke to, was that the use of that building will be for business to operate online sales in that property. But other than that, the J E K S Holdings is the actual property owner. And so is your property next door to that, is that what you're saying? Okay. How about you and I speak after this meeting, and we can talk about what you would like to do on your property? I don't believe that this will have any impact on your property.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, now officially close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend the approval of the conditional use permit to allow the use of an office warehouse for the property located at four thousand Texoma Parkway.
I'll second.
Have a motion with a second. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? All right, we'll go to item four B.
I am not going to read the entire case for you all. I think you, I know Ms. York likes to do that. Counsel does not like us to do that, so I trust that you all can read that for yourselves. But this is for a request to approve a conditional use permit for a property that is located at one thirty West Woodard Street, more commonly known as Driggs Liquor. They are looking to put a mobile food unit in the parking lot that is just south of the property, and this area is within the central area. For those of you that are familiar with the historic overlay district, they had to come through for some things as well for this property, and that would complement the mobile food unit. Staff has requested a parking plan, so we are asking for a few conditions to be tied to this conditional use permit, should it be approved. We would like to see where the spaces will be located and what that traffic flow looks like. As you can see on your screen, the food truck does, is on the far east side of the property line. And because North Austin Avenue is, the parking lot is adjacent to that, we just wanna make sure that the flow is correct so that we are not having any additional accidents. There are some lights close by, and so just trying to make sure we understand what that looks like. Also, each mobile food unit, they are anticipating that there may be a different mobile food unit located there at different times, but only one food truck at a time, but they're going to rotate what those look like. So the requirement listed within chapter fifteen, Article Three, means that each mobile food unit has to go through their proper disposal, making sure that they have all of their permits through the county health department and things like that. So that's what that second condition is for. And then the third condition is adhering to all building and fire codes, so meaning that they have to have electricity, making sure that the mobile food unit is placed far enough away from the existing structure. And so those, those are the three conditions that staff would like to see. We have received a preliminary site plan detailing the location as you saw on the previous slide. And so with that, we do recommend approval as long as those three conditions are met. Mr. Earnhardt is here to speak on behalf of this request.
Okay, any questions of staff?
I do. If you could go back a picture before that, I just wanna make sure the parking plan is just to show where the parking will be. It is not necessarily to be the required fifteen places-
That is correct.
Since there is all the other parking around there.
Thank you for pointing that out. That is correct. There is a minimum requirement of fifteen parking spaces. I don't know where that request came from. It doesn't really, for central area, it doesn't make sense, right? For central area, but for the overlay areas there are. So it falls within that Austin overlay. And so as you can see, there are multiple surface lots surrounding it as well as on-street parking. So I don't have a problem not adhering to that as long as you're all okay with that.
Yeah, 'cause there's, they have access parking on Woodard as well.
Yes, there's plenty.
As well as-
I think we can all see that, yes.
And I think there's good circulation as far as coming in, because I think there's access to the alley.
That's correct. We just need it to be denoted, and so we need to have it on record that that's how it's going to be, and then it'll have to be striped that way.
Anything else? All right, would the applicant like to come forward?
Jonathan Earnhardt, one-ten South Houston Avenue, Dennison. That site plan's a little off because we can't put that food truck next to that building. The fire marshal told us we have to be ten feet from that building. So in our, our development meeting, we discussed doing it all the way towards Austin Avenue, still on our property. We actually own that's off about, I think it's like twelve feet past our building all the way down. That's private property, but we would be more parallel with that building where that power pole is. Or we would be where we, where it's drawn over there, but we would have to be ten feet from the building. And the reason why we may not put it over there is depending on where we can get power. So we would like to run power so they're not having to run generator. So we are planning on installing a meter that they can plug into and not run a generator. So there's poles on both sides, but being that that pole may, they may not service on that other pole. For, I forget the reason Encore said that it was, some reason, or either it was maxed out or the closeness to the building, they didn't want it, they wanted to put it on the other pole. The fire marshal did say we could run it from the building if Encore was unwilling to run it across, which would be our exit in there, but still, we would like it where it's not ran over all the time. And you're, it might get better attention if it's towards Austin, so that may be the spot that it goes there. Our goal is not a full-time food truck, it, food truck, it's more like, like a food truck Friday or something. Just, we're just trying to get attention to the spot. There's really no benefit for us to have it there except we wanna bring in out-of-town food trucks like the, the Lobster Brothers, you know, the corn dog place, the ones you might see up here every once in a while. We wanna bring stuff up there. It's really just to get attention to the business and try to amp the business up there some. We will do parking spots. I thought we already had one drawn out up there in a fire lane around where it can, everybody can look through there real easy. There's obviously a lot of parking. Our employees are normally one at a time. Maybe for an hour, we might have two. We have the upfront parking, and the clientele at Driggs is normally one or two at the most at a time. We don't have a lot of parking. And if the food truck, if we get a popular one, it might be a little crowded then, but we should have ample space and done, Woodard, on that side of Woodard, it's barely utilized on that parking on top of that. But, and I'm, can answer any questions, too?
From the Historic Preservation Board, I also know that you're planning on some tables to eat there, which would be just on the left or the west side of the building fenced off-
Correct.
-from Austin Avenue. So people who get their food would be able to go to someplace to eat.
Yes, that's correct.
We wanna make sure the pedestrians are gonna be safe, and I'm sure the site plan, the final site plan will have that. But just for the board, there are gonna be tables for people to eat from the food truck.
Yeah, and it'll just be to the west of the building. It will take the exact same size as the building out to the end of our property, which is about twelve feet, and it will be fenced off, or at least a part on the, the side road will be fenced off just to kinda make you feel a little safer, like someone is not gonna run up on you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on behalf of this request? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I'm here to recommend-
We have a question.
Is anyone against it?
I just ask if there was anyone here to speak on it.
I'm just on behalf of it. Is that for?
Well, for or against, either way.
I'd like to speak against it.
Okay, come on.
My name is John Zapata, one-twenty-five West Woodard. We, our family owns the art gallery right across the street from it. We've looked at this plan, and we've had a hard time trying to see how it fits the, you know, the neighborhood. You know, it's a really historic street. The March Brothers played there in the thirties. We'd like to still kinda keep it in that historical type of manner. It seems like there's being, you know, a lot of accommodations are having to be made just to make it fit, so we feels like it's not really something that is designed to be there. We have food establishments throughout downtown. We've got them at the depot, you know, the Devil Egg Place. So we have quite a few food places, so something temporary like that, we just don't see it fitting. We have, we host our events at the art gallery on the weekends, and that's when we have our most amount of parking requirements that we need for ourselves. And some of our Saturdays have been so busy that I, I have difficulty putting additional parking now, 'cause, you know, I know you say there's quite a bit, and there is, but, you know, it's easier for people to stop by if they know they can park right in front of our business. And I think with something like this, it's gonna restrict some of that. So our family, while they are definitely been good neighbors to us, and we have enjoyed them being there, we just feel like this particular use does not fit our street.
Okay, any questions of the speaker? Anyone else? Either for or against? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of a conditional use permit to allow the use of a mobile food unit for property located at one thirty West Woodard Street with the following conditions. A parking plan is provided to staff illustrating spaces and a driving aisle for the parking lot where the mobile food unit will be situated. Each mobile food unit must adhere to the requirements listed within chapter fifteen, Article Three. Each mobile food unit must adhere to all building and fire codes.
Have a motion? Do I have a second? I have a second? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Item four C.
Thank you. Item four C is the last request for a conditional use permit for a property located at nine seventeen South Armstrong Avenue. This is a request for the operation of an automotive repair shop. It previously was an automotive repair shop, and it's located within a commercial district. The conditional use permit is required again because the previous one had lapsed. And so when there's a change, not necessarily in ownership, however, this is under new ownership, but when the previous one lapses, the new owner is required to come through for a conditional use permit. So that's why this is coming before the commission again. Since the new owner has taken over, there have been improvements to the building. And in the past, staff has had to put in place fencing requirements between the residential property and the commercial property, and that fence is still in place. Staff would ask, in consideration of this conditional use permit, that there also be a few conditions included. Because the property is mostly concrete or asphalt, there's really no opportunity for the applicant to come in and put landscaping in place. If you recall, we have seen situations like this on South Austin Avenue as well, where we've requested that planters be placed by the entrance or within the parking lot somewhere. And so we are asking that that be a condition, that be included in this case as well. Unless they came in and had to replace all of the concrete for some reason, which of course they do not have to at this point in time, that's when we would put those landscape requirements in for sod or something like that.
Is there a previous surface max requirement as well?
There, so it's a hundred percent at this point. And so through the redevelopment process, that's when we would come back and ask for something else. But because he doesn't need to do that at this point, and the use is staying the same, we are just asking for planters of some sort be put in place. There is also a carport on the site at this point in time. We would like that to be removed, I believe, other way. And so that's coming off the building. That should be removed. And then we would also ask that open storage of materials in mobile vehicles or vehicles awaiting repair should be prohibited unless they are screened. So that is typical. We just wanna make sure that that condition is in, is noted within the ordinance. Additionally, the applicant has proposed hours of operation consisting of eight AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, with additional hours of eight AM to three PM on Saturday. Because this is adjacent to residential property, staff is asking that you consider that hours of operation be prohibited on Saturday and Sunday, and that is simply due to the previous CUP had that condition in there. So being this is a new owner, but the similar use, I would ask that you consider that and possibly ask the applicant his thoughts on that. Of course, we know that Saturday hours of operation are important to a small business owner, but that does carry over from the last conditional use permit that had the same use. With that, staff does recommend approval. This does fit into the comprehensive plan and the future land use of the commercial zoning district. And the applicant is present for any questions.
Questions of staff?
So you would recommend adding a fourth condition about hours?
Um, we had some debate about that internally, and so we are putting it to you to have that discussion amongst yourselves. As this is a new application, I think it is always best to consider what the applicant is requesting. They can speak to their business model and what that looks like best. I, I can't answer those questions. But because that has been put in place before, it may look something like a ten to three. Maybe it's a little later because the house is right there, but that would be a question for the applicant.
Go ahead and voice my opinion here concerning that. It's a commercial district. You know, this kinda goes back maybe to the old case of, I bought a house at the end of a runway, and I'm upset that the airplanes are coming up. I don't know that I, I don't think that I'm totally in favor of not allowing him to open at all on Saturdays. Maybe we could meet in the middle and just say maybe an eight to noon type schedule. But I think it's, I think it's a little bit restrictive since it's in a commercial district.
I'm in agreeance. I was the opposite opinion this time.
The fact that we actually said it's a commercial district, and we expect businesses to be viable, right? That, you know, I, I guess we have to understand. But at the same time, putting restrictions on a business that's investing, we mean and he wants to be viable in a commercial district. Now, if this were an exception for zoning, I think then there might be some consideration, in my opinion.
That's right.
But this is a clear commercial district.
I agree.
I look forward to hearing from him, because he also talked about Saturday and/or Sunday. Then I might add a little.
Yeah, I agree with that. Are you the applicant, sir? Name and address for the record.
This is Javier Cantula, I'm with Mariposa Realty, and I'm in twelve-one North Desiway, Garland, Texas.
Okay.
And address here is nine seventeen South Armstrong.
Can you come a little closer to the microphone, sir?
Um, yes, it would be a big factor on the, I'm in automotive for twenty-seven years. I'm not gonna be here, I'm gonna list this one out, but it is Saturday that is very important on auto repairs. So we can try to adjust the hours, but I really would, you know, see if you could consider giving us some hours on Sunday.
Would you be, would you be open to an eight to twelve on Saturday, closed on Sunday schedule?
I have no issues with Sunday. Close Sunday, that's no problem. But if we can do, maybe it'd be better for residential, we do ten to four, maybe a little bit later, and then earlier. Because eight, we can do that, but I think it'd be more beneficial for somebody that's-
So if somebody's sleeping in on Saturday mornings, you're gonna start later, so you won't wake them up early?
Yes, not just us, but the customers also, they're gonna go grab a breakfast first, have coffee, come around ten o'clock, change the oil, instead of coming at eight. And then it's gonna be many customers, and you're gonna try to finish it at noon.
So what are you doing in the shop? What type of work are you doing in the shop? And would anything that you do make excessive noise in the area?
No. As I noted there, there's also already, I put a firestone, I apologize, it's an interstate shop right next to us, there's a tire shop on the south side. We do have six-inch insulation on the walls and on the ceiling. Tools right now that have been used, they're, they're battery-operated tools, so there's no compressor that is a big two-high gallon that is making noise, so they're just very strong battery-operated tools. But the building is well insulated. I also apply the rubber compound on the roof that also is rubberized, so stops more, helps from the heat also, but it's, it's a good insulated building. Also, it is positioned in a corner close to the street, not close to the housing, so I'm not, I'm not concerned with that. It is in line with the interstate shop, so I don't think the noise will be issued there.
Any questions of the speaker?
I note in your letter, you didn't anticipate any landscaping. Do you have any problem with the planters?
If I have to, I mean, it is covered, it's gonna, it's gonna be, you know, challenged because it is covered, it's asphalted all the way around. I really don't like that idea, but it's, I'm gonna respect what you-
I'm sure the staff and you- I'm sure the staff knew you had some good ideas about that since it has been done before.
That's fine, that's fine. And then carport is not an issue there. I mean, I acquired this property five months ago, so that was there before. No problem. It does look much cleaner and that's what I'm trying to do. That's my direction. I'm not trying to be a nuisance to the city or so are I. The tenant that is coming in, I already have a relationship with for five years. She's been my tenant in Dallas County, so she's the responsible person.
Well, we're not trying to be hard, but we appreciate you cleaning the building up and everything. But what we are trying to do is to beautify, for lack of a better term, Austin Avenue. And the landscaping will enhance the property and it also, it's going to be a catalyst for other people to start doing the same thing. And the next thing you know, your property values are going to be a lot better than they were. So we, you know, we realize you might look at it as an imposition, but I think in the long run, it'll be an asset to you.
I can do that. That's fine. No problem with me on that.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else here to speak on behalf of this request, either for or against? Okay, staff, I mean, members of the board, what do you guys think about a ten to four time limit on Saturdays?
I'm okay with that, but at the same time, this is a commercial district on both sides of the street. I'm not opposed to going as requested because we're not restricting people that live on Woodard, or businesses on Woodard Avenue because they have houses on Gandy Street.
That's true.
We're not restricting anywhere else in the overlay district, so why should we restrict here? It is commercial adjacent, it is commercial across the street. This is a business district and we want to attract commerce into the downtown. We want people to come down, have their coffee, get their car worked on and be here. We don't, I think it'd be unfair to put restrictions, in my opinion, anywhere that's already zoned commercial. If this were a request for a variance in zoning, then I think it would be considered, in my opinion. But we don't have restrictions inside of these.
I agree with Ernie. I agree with him on that.
I agree also because while I understand this is a conditional use permit that's now before the board, Interstate Tires or the other, Interstate Battery or the Tire Shop were before this, don't have those restrictions.
And those are independent cases. So this is a conditional use permits are case by case.
This is all brand-new case.
Exactly.
Okay. I do, before we proceed with closing the public hearing and entertain a motion, I would like to, for the record, let you know that Ronald Moore, I don't know if he's here, maybe him that left, at seven twenty-one West Hall, sent a letter in opposing the request on the grounds that it would dramatically decrease my property values. In addition, would be aesthetically unappealing. So he was a definite no. So for the record, that.
But it wasn't for business hours, it was for use.
It was for use and property. So, okay. All right, that being said, since there's no one else to speak on behalf of this request, I want to close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move to recommend the approval of a conditional use permit to allow for the use of an automotive repair shop with the following conditions. The landscaping planters be placed at the main structure entrance to satisfy landscaping requirements. That the carport will be removed, I think that'll be beneficial for all. Open storage materials, immobile vehicles and vehicles awaiting repair shall be prohibited. And I also would like to add that I propose we accept the proposed business operating hours.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Item four D.
Item four D, we are looking at a replat of tract number six and tract number seven in the Walton Edition, which is case number twenty-two-four twenty-two RP. This is a property that is located in the city of Dennison's ETJ. The purpose of the replat is to adjust lot lines between two existing lots. Up on your screen, you can see the property up there. The lots do front on Davy Lane and they have water access. The city does have water lines out that direction and they utilize a septic system for sewer service. These are both residential lots. The intention is to sell the, one of the lots and retain the other one. However, in order to obtain city water service, that lot would have to be annexed into the city. Currently, they are not, so that would be another step should they want to receive water. And then it would also be a sewer property as well.
So a question, if there's only one existing water meter, does the second lot affect these?
It will if it's annexed in. And they, yes. With that, staff does recommend approval of the proposed replat.
Any questions of staff? Seeing none? Is the applicant here?
No.
Nope, okay. Anyone else here to speak on behalf of this request, either for or against? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat.
A second.
Have a motion with a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, this is our last item today and it is also a replat, case number twenty-two-four twenty-seven RP. We are looking at a replat for lot one R and lot two R of the Parkdale Storage Edition. This is a replat of an amending plat previously. The applicant is looking to create two legal lots of record incorporating a portion of a platted right-of-way into the proposed lots. It came to our attention that the amending plat that was done created the legal lots of record to accommodate a development that was approved by staff in January of twenty-twenty-two. The platted right-of-way was determined to actually not be a city right-of-way. So with this, it cleans all of this up and it essentially abandons that right-of-way to make sure that, that the lot is reflected legally. So with that, the city does, or staff does recommend approval. This is also in the ETJ. So the applicant is here. We've gone back and forth on this quite a bit. A legal has brought their opinion, so this is what we need to do to get his property cleaned up and to take out that little section that's right behind the, the storage buildings to make this just a clean, two legal lots of record.
Is there still a piece of the right-of-way in the deed of the adjacent property?
That, yeah, that would still be there, but it is not, so when they.
Becomes totally locked at that moment.
Correct.
That's not city right-of-way.
No. I'm not totally sure how this one came about. It was prior to my time with the city.
Because they put for the development case maybe with a cul-de-sac or something to develop the property residential?
Right.
My understanding is the county doesn't want the right-of-way either.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot to this one legally. And so this is the step that we have to take.
The county doesn't have to take care of the road.
Right.
They don't want it, so.
Water and sewer could be made available there. Of course, it would have to be annexed because it's in the ETJ.
Any questions of staff? Anyone here to speak on behalf of this request?
David Couch, nine thirty-one Waterloo Lake Drive. And I'm here to answer any questions. I've been trying to plot this property since two thousand nineteen. Vacate that right-of-way dedication since two thousand nineteen, which exists only on a plat from nineteen sixty-two. And as you can see to the north, this originally was a U-shaped subdivision with forty lots and then they built an apartment complex to the property to the north of me and they vacated that per plat. And I'm assuming that planning is only at that point, but that hammerhead in there. However, I took the, you know, I combined all my lots, which were six through ten and eleven through fourteen, into the two properties with the mini plat in twenty-two. And I really didn't have a problem with that right-of-way dedication as I operated the facility, but I went to sell the property and was unable to transact because the buyers were saying, what if somebody did this and what if somebody did that? So they, so now I'm needing to do that to transact the property.
Any questions of the speaker?
No, I'm just going to commend him for his perseverance.
That's why it's been a long time. I've got a six-year-old daughter and six years is a long time. She's tortured me for six years, so, and the city of Dennison as well.
All right. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else want to speak on behalf of this request? Either for or against? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. We'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat.
Second. Have a motion with a second. Mr. Sylvester? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So we are down to number five, staff updates.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that the CUPs will go to council on Tuesday. We are off the twentieth and so our council meeting is moved to the twenty-first. So that's when the three CUP cases will go before council. We did receive our award letter from the Texas General Land Office, which is great news for the comprehensive plan rewrite as well as the zoning plan rewrite and future land use. So I will be doing a council update, project update, the first meeting in February to let them know of that award because they budgeted ninety thousand to go towards that project and so I'm required to put that before council. And then we will send out the RFP to get started on that project. And that is all I have.
That's all we got? All right, Kirk, again, welcome.
Thank you.
And so seeing no other business before the commission, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned at ten forty-one AM.